And to start, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we have an A and R 200 Maple Street Fountain and Sons Construction, Inc.
No, I think it's anything extra that, yeah.
And I need to check you also?
Yes. It's seventy-five.
So it'll be seventy-five plus forty?
No, plus twenty-five, so a hundred.
A hundred.
Right, it's one lot.
Yeah. Anybody has any questions?
What do we have here, Jim?
That's the lot that I'm building a house on right now.
Can we start identifying yourself, your name?
Yes, James Fountain, Fountain and Sons Construction. We built the house up on its eight and a half acres, it was a whole piece, and now we're splitting off just where the house is on the legal building lot. Thirty thousand plus square feet.
Kind of hushy point on it.
It's already built.
Oh, okay.
It's already his ranch. There's some people from, moving into town from Milford.
Yeah, we were talking about, yeah, like, gotta build some more houses in town, people come on wanting to move here.
Yeah, they sold the one over on Cummins Pond the other day also.
Oh, really?
Good.
That's good.
Good, good.
Seems like people are getting a little hesitant to buying right now.
Interest rates going up, yeah.
Certainly, everybody.
I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions either.
Drew and Ed?
No questions. Pretty straightforward.
I'll do a motion to approve the A and R on 200 Maple Street for Fountain and Sons Construction Company.
Second.
All in favor?
Drew King, aye.
Ed Longdigan, aye.
David Dufrain, aye.
Rich Aihacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's, aye. Sorry, Rich, were you gonna say something?
No. I was jumping the gun on voting.
Just to sign off. So we sign this one over here.
And I signed in black just to make you happy.
You needed them too, right?
Yeah, see? I'm very thorough. Well, no, Derek has one, right? How many copies do you have, Jim?
I thought we would have been good.
It's up to you.
Sir, hold the mile hour over here.
I want to say, yeah, could move that.
There we go. Let me just go online what Rich was doing here.
Do you want me to bring this over to you, Mr. Lee?
Sure.
Save you walking.
Everything's dated?
Does everything else go to him?
Yep.
Did you date everything?
I did, yeah.
So now we're going to continue the public hearing on special permit number three oh two for Samec Properties LLC under section eight of the Town of Warren zoning bylaws. The applicant is seeking a special permit to remove earth material from the property located at two seventy-five Brimfield Road. Warren, this parcel is also known as Assessor's Map thirty lot zero four, which is in the rural district. A copy of the application may be inspected in the office of the planning board or town clerk office during normal business hours.
He has to continue to the twenty-fourth.
Continue to the twenty-fourth?
Yeah, because he didn't, he doesn't have what you asked for yet, it's taken a while to get it. It's more acreage than he thought.
So I'll make a motion to continue the hearing until October twenty-fourth.
Second.
All in favor?
Drew King, aye.
Ed Longdigan, aye.
David Dufrain, aye.
Rich Aihacker, aye.
Derek Bailey, aye. It has been continued to the twenty-fourth of October. Item number five, Agilis Cutler Road Extension Solar Site modification request for detention basin two lot three. Do we have anybody in Zoom then?
Ah, Nick.
I see somebody waving.
Hey guys, Dylan, it's Nick from Level Design.
Hi Nick, how are you?
Here on the hand of Agilitas Energy. I think we last left this a month ago, with the board was going to check in with OTO and see if they had any comments on the plan that we had submitted.
All right, so there was four requests, basically. I talked to Stephen at OTO. So to, their first request was to clean, remove accumulated sediment from the basin floor. He was good with that and said it should be done. The next one is install a four-inch perforated subdrain down at the center of the basin floor. He did not think that was a good idea. Third is remove any visible sticks, roots, or rocks until the basin floor. He was good with that, so yes. Maintain the standpipe outlets for as long as required for the basin floor to reach eighty percent stabilization, he said yes.
So they recommend no change other than the cleaning?
Basically, yeah. We did talk about the standpipes in the other lot three basins. He, I guess he, we ended up with a no to remove those. But he said it kind of could have gone up either way, so. But we can leave those.
So leave everything just clean up?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm good with that.
So we are saying no to the, that subdrain and knife gate and stuff.
So just for the record, can we be provided a copy of OTO's report? I know we had continued this meeting, you know, with the hopes that they'd be in attendance at the public hearing to discuss these items. And I'd like to know if they provided any background information on why a subdrain with a, with a valve is discouraged by them. I mean, I'd like to see some technical data that says why that would be a detriment to the functionality of the basin. Not just, they don't agree with it, that seems, you know, it's different from the conversation that Steve and I had on the site. I'll be perfectly honest, you know, while we were doing the test pits, we saw the material, we discussed it. Kind of surprised that Steve would come back with that type of decision. You know, that's kind of why we went in that direction, based on our discussions in the field, on what we thought would be appropriate for the basin. So, you know, I'm kind of disappointed that they're not attendants to actually discuss this or provide any, you know, documentation on why it wouldn't be allowable.
So I talked to him on the phone, so all I can give you are notes from a phone call. He was questioning why the subdrain slash valve was needed, he didn't think it was needed. The basin needs to work without having the valve open. Once it's open, will it ever be closed? I think that was a fear that we all had. Subdrain and valve would need to be included in the maintenance plan. He also said that these devices need maintenance and they may create more problems than what they solve because if they get clogged up or damaged or whatever, you know, anything that could happen to them, then they need to be dealt with.
It probably wouldn't be a bad idea to have something in writing from him, just, yeah.
Yeah. But ultimately, it's our decision, I mean, based on this, he did.
No, I know.
Well, I think we should take the advice of our peer reviewer, that's what they are there for.
Yeah.
To do this. And I don't think there's much discussion, our peer reviewers said he doesn't advise it. So, you know, I could do a motion to deny the modification to the basin at the Agilis Cutler Road Extension Solar Site.
Second.
All in favor?
Drew King, aye.
Ed Longdigan, aye.
David Dufrain, aye.
Rich Aihacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's, aye.
Okay, so where are we with the standpipes for lot three? I mean, we discussed this at the last meeting we were on with Joyce was present, she was on board and believed that the site was stabilized and that removing the standpipes was a perfectly suitable idea.
So when I talked to, when I talked to Stephen, he thought that they need, or should remain until the project is done. There's, so there's still construction that's going to go on. So he was of the opinion that they can remain until everything is finished. So that's, that's what he said.
Leave them until everything's done.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, you know, the reality is that, one of the reasons that basin's not working is because of the standpipe. You know, I'm not gonna, you know, I'm gonna be honest, I'm disappointed that there's no, we waited six weeks for OTO's input and review and to not have a formal document, to not have a member present to discuss these things. You know, we continued the meeting last time because OTO couldn't attend the public hearing to discuss these matters. You know, it's, you know, it's my professional opinion that that's the wrong course of action and it's not preferred for the site at this point in time. I wish Steve was here to defend his position or at least provide something in writing to support that. Is Joyce in the room? I can't see who was present. You know, we did discuss this, she was present at the first hearing, we discussed this and was on board with removing the standpipes. And it was her position who enforced the installation of those standpipes. You know, it was Joyce who kind of pushed on that topic, and we agreed with her that they should be installed. You know, so I guess, I guess we'll, you know, we accept the, you know, the denial on the modification, but, you know, to maintain those standpipes, it's a detriment to the property currently because the site's stabilized, there's no reason for those basins to pond up, hold water, compact that soil underneath at the bottom of the basin and cause these basins to not function properly.
So as I recall the conversation, the opinion was that yes, they could be removed until construction starts again. Because once construction starts, then you're still going to be, you're going to be moving around the property, you're going to be digging the foundation holes for the panels. So there's the potential to create runoff, not runoff, but, you know, debris. So, I don't know, that.
That is correct, and when we discussed this, when Joyce gave her input, you know, she recommended that we provide additional erosion control measures for when the panels are installed. And I provided a separate plan, I don't know if OTO had a chance to review that plan, that had additional erosion control measures to be installed upstream prior to the basins to mitigate any limited runoff from, you know, the drilling of the foundations for the array tables and for equipment driving over the stabilized site. You know, disturbance is going to be minimalized for that type of work. You know, the main part of the disturbance is over. You know, the site's been cleared, grubbed, graded, driveways have been installed, everything's there. You know, there's no reason to keep those standpipes, you know, per NITD standards, per the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. It makes no sense, as I said, all it's doing is impeding the functionality of the basins as they're currently installed.
I think the peer reviewer gave his advice. Again, you know, he's better than we do, that's why we pay him big money, so.
I mean, we can get something in writing from him, just explaining his position.
No, we understand it, and like I said, it's been six weeks that this table, this matter's been on the table. And it's a very straightforward matter, I don't think it required a lot of their time or review. So not having any type of document, you know, other than, as you said, notes from a phone call. You know, we've been putting off doing additional work at the site, waiting on this meeting. I know we know there's other work to be done out there to clear up some other items. And all that's been pushed off, you know, because we don't want to mobilize the contractor to do part of the work, we want them to do all the work. So we've been holding off on that until this point in time. So if we could get some sort of documentation in writing from OTO that we can respond to, you know, I'd like to see their, what's their engineering opinion of why those shouldn't be removed? You know, we'd like a chance to respond to that. So for the time being, we'd like to keep that matter open until we're given a proper chance to respond.
Probably get the response from them.
I mean, it's really an email, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Shouldn't be hard to do.
So for the record, I have copied Steve on every single document that's been submitted to the planning board for over six weeks ago. So it's not that they don't have the information or have been not provided the information in a timely fashion, they've had all the information. They've had the request, they've had the revised plans. So they have everything they need to provide a document.
So maybe if you can talk to him about it to get that, maybe share the video and see this conversation, so he can reply to you. I apologize, he's not here. Nick, but we're gonna try to get him and respond to you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Thank you, Nick.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Yeah, can I have a motion for payroll?
Sure, I make a motion, we pay Jill in the amount of two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and two hundred and sixteen dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Drew King, aye.
Ed Longdigan, aye.
David Dufrain, aye.
Rich Aihacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's, aye.
Okay, I make a motion, we approve and sign the invoices with WB Mason, the amount of sixty-nine dollars and twelve cents and twenty-four dollars and seventeen cents for office supplies.
Second.
All in favor?
Drew King, aye.
Ed Longdigan, aye.
David Dufrain, aye.
Rich Aihacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's, aye.
I make a motion, we approve and sign the expense sheet for mileage reimbursement in the amount of seven dollars and forty-eight cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Drew King, aye.
Ed Longdigan, aye.
David Dufrain, aye.
Rich Aihacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's, aye.
I make a motion, we approve and sign the July thirty-first invoices for O'Reilly Talbot in Oakland in the amount of four hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-three cents and four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirteen cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Drew King, aye.
Ed Longdigan, aye.
David Dufrain, aye.
Rich Aihacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's, aye.
I make a motion, we approve and sign the September twelfth, twenty twenty-two minutes.
Anybody got to sit a minute? Do you have a second or do we need more time?
Second.
All in favor?
Drew King, aye.
Ed Longdigan, aye.
David Dufrain, aye.
Rich Aihacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's, aye. So welcome to comments and concerns. Do you have any comments or concerns, gentlemen?
Nothing tonight.
Jim?
No, sir.
Anybody on Zoom? Not many.
Nope.
Is there anybody even there? Is there anybody even on Zoom?
Charlene, Jim Ferrara, and Cable TV.
Yeah.
Okay.
Double different on us, Jim?
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not on Zoom.
It says you are.
Uh-uh.
Do you have your laptop upstairs?
No.
Cell phone?
No.
Poltergeist.
No.
Somebody impersonating Jim?
I don't know, there we go, that's it.
Omar?
Jim Corina Junior.
JR.
Who's Jim Ferrera? Please talk to us.
I asked to unmute.
It's nothing bad, it's just, you know, sometimes like, when I Zoom, I Zoom as my wife or my kids or vice versa, so.
So who's online is Jim Ferrera tonight?
Is there another Jim out there? It's not.
Wow, okay.
Okay, it doesn't say what device he's on?
No, it doesn't give any information.
How do they spell the name?
F E R R E R A?
Yeah.
I could just, can I boot them out?
Look it in. But I'm not a junior.
Oh, you're not?
Oh, so they messed that one up.
Yeah.
Oh, well.
Do your research next time, you get caught.
Okay, so can we move to other business?
Other business, we did get a check from Copart for, ah, Copart, yeah, for the peer review. I have yet to call TEC.
Okay. How much is the amount?
Five thousand, just to fund, you know, fund the account like it happened before.
Did they ever get back to legal? Remember they came up and said that they wanted to settle and legal said, what do you got? And they didn't have anything, they were going to get back to them, right? With some sort of a.
That was CPT.
Oh, okay, wrong one.
Next meeting now?
Oh, do we need to talk about Donna, the Donna thing?
No.
Well, I have a question. There were eight continuances, right? And you said three of which were at the request of applicant. What about the other five? Didn't she requested all of them, right?
Not, it possibly could have been her engineer too, which would have been still her.
Yeah, it's still her.
Waiting for time, you have to make a little more time, I have it all printed out upstairs.
Okay, I don't think we requested any continuances.
I think you did request, because she didn't have certain paperwork, so you asked.
Yeah.
I think, I think there were a couple times when we said, yeah, we'll continue it, yeah. So I think it was us, but I don't, I don't think it was five.
Yeah.
No, the majority were her.
Okay, so we just should clarify that. And then just remember, whatever we do here, we need enough time to have it go to legal and come back. Legal leave room for that.
Okay. All right, but, yeah, the decision shouldn't take long. The decision shouldn't take long. Okay.
Anything else?
I don't think so. So our next meeting is October 24th?
Yeah, we missed Columbus Day.
Oh, yeah, right, okay.
What else is for October 24th?
Samick. Samick and Lancaster Rapids.
And then probably Agilis again, depending on, you know, what happens.
All for me?
Straighten out for you, sir.
Thank you.
All right.
I don't think we need to keep on going with the meeting.
Okay, so. Since our next meeting is on October 24th, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Drew King, aye.
Ed Longdigan, aye?
David Dufrain, aye?
Rich Ihacker, aye?
Derek Bailey, aye? Meeting has ended.